All right, we want to welcome everybody today. Before we get started, just a couple of housekeeping things. If you need anything, if you can let Austin, our clerk, know. There are bathrooms close by if you need that. Also, the tech team wanted me to ask you, so with this many mics and this type of room, it's hard to turn everybody's gain up at one time. So when we do get to the discussion time, if you'll pull your mic closer to you to make sure that you're able to be heard. We are getting ready to get started, and so if everybody's ready. On behalf of the Board of Education of Granville County, I call our meeting to order.
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I call the meeting to order.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Hemen. Ms. Anderson, would you begin with our invocation, please?
Yes, that's great. I do thank you for this day. This is a day that we've never seen before and we will never see again. So it's what we do today, Lord, in support of each other, that you will shine on us. Heavenly Father, I ask that you continue to bless each and everyone here today. Lord, as we move forward in doing your business, bless each and every member of these joint boards, Lord, that we will do your will, Lord, as we continue to seek the things that you would have us to do. Be with us this day, Heavenly Father, this afternoon during this session, and we will continue to keep you first and foremost. We ask these things in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. This time, Ms. Sue, will you call on your commissioner to lead us in a pledge?
If the rest may please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Board of Education members, members of the public. Did a little research today and found out that in 1931, the General Assembly passed the School Machinery Act. This piece of legislation gave responsibility to funding public education to the state of North Carolina, but it also charged our local governments, our county governments, with facility and other local expenses. Tonight, or this afternoon, in an effort of transparency, we are pleased to invite our county commissioners and their staff to our Mary Potter campus to hear a presentation on the campus of G.C. Hawley. We had scheduled this a little over a year ago, but due to COVID, we're here now. We thank our county commissioners for joining us, and I look forward to hearing the presentation and a fruitful conversation that will come afterwards. Again, the purpose of today's meeting is to circle around the campus of G.C. Hawley. You'll hear what got us to this point. You'll hear a potential recommendation of a presentation from our architect, and then we'll have conversation afterwards to gain clarity, answer questions, and maybe pose some questions. Again, we would like to welcome you, and if you need anything, please let us know. Ms. Hemen, we'd like to turn this over to you now.
Well, I'd like to thank each and every one of you, and thank you for inviting us to this meeting. We're very excited about this, and I just can't say thank you enough, but thank you for everybody for being here this afternoon to do this. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Now we'll have Dr. Stan Winborn, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Human Resources, give us a historical review and timeline of what got us to this place today.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. This is a little different than a Zoom meeting. I think I don't know if I've been around this many people since we've been in COVID, so good to see all of you in person. This is a special treat. Joining us shortly will be Catherine Peel, an architect from LS3P. She's running just a little late, but I just texted her, and she'll join us shortly and be able to walk through her presentation after I finish mine. But as Mr. Richardson pointed out, I think it might be worth just sort of answering that question about, you know, why are we here exactly? You know, what is the business at hand tonight? And I think, you know, being really transparent and upfront about that is critical for this conversation. If you recall, right before the pandemic hit, we were all scheduled to sit down and meet about this very topic in March of 2020. There was a meeting on the books for us to come together and talk about Hawley and reorganization and sort of address these efforts. And of course, that got derailed, like just about everything else, when we were all forced to hunker down, and we sort of, you know, turned our attention to other things, as we should have. Also, though, since that time, both boards have brought on new members, and these are folks that weren't previously on our board and didn't necessarily have a front row seat to all of the, you know, efforts, all of the votes, all of the studies, and so on and so forth that had occurred leading up to that meeting that we had planned a year ago. So, you know, this meeting here today is an effort to get caught up and to catch up all of those new folks. So I'm going to go through and provide some historical information. Over the past three years, efforts that our superintendent and our board have undertaken, this really coincides with right after Dr. McLean's arrival, although this is a problem or a challenge that goes back over a decade, okay, in the making. And so we're going to have a chance to sort of go through that and make sure we hit the highlights and understand what's going on. And then, as I said, Ms. Catherine Peel, an architect from LS3P, a firm out of Raleigh, is going to come in and talk about one specific part of the puzzle, which is the potential renovation of G.C. Hawley Middle School. She also, her and her firm, assisted us with looking at a couple of other options, and I'll talk about that a little bit as I get into the presentation. But at your table, each of you should have a folder with the Granville County logo on it, and inside of it is a presentation, okay, just with a staple. It's front and back, document titled "Granville County Public Schools: Efficiency of School Facility Use and School Reorganization." So if you'll just open up and look at that table of contents, let me hit the highlights real quick. I'm going to talk a little bit, give an overview of the topic, and then I'll talk about the challenge that the district has faced. Going to go through trends in average daily membership of our students, the charter school enrollment that has coincided with that, and then talk about the topic of school capacity. And this, as it relates to how we calculate it versus what's reported to DPI, and that sort of area of focus. Then I'm going to shift gears and talk about ways that we've approached solving this problem or overcoming this challenge. And I'd also like to sort of get to some of the more recent efforts that have gone on with task forces and board meetings and surveys and so on and so forth. And then I'll also point out that there are some appendices included in this document. You'll notice that there are blue links in here, hyperlinks, so I will be sure to send this out electronically so folks can click on those and jump to them as well. All right? So, let's start with an overview. Obviously, having our school facilities used efficiently is critically important. During the past decade in Granville County, we've seen the number of students enrolled decline, and unfortunately, this preceded or coincided with about the same time that we built two schools in this district. That was Tar River Elementary in 2011, and then Granville Central High School right before that in 2007. So enrollment was pretty steady, and actually, the trends and some of the projections prior to the construction of these two schools led everyone to believe that enrollment was going to keep going up, and therefore, these new schools needed to be built. Unfortunately, that didn't turn out to be the case. So, here we are, and in over a decade, we've lost more than 20% of the enrollment we had. So, using a school facility efficiently really is done by looking at the capacity numbers of a school. And Nordecon, a Department of Public Instruction, provides a framework to calculate this, okay? And you can see, you can read through these paragraphs and look at this table on page two, and see that really, the way that it's done is by counting the number of classrooms, determining how many children should be in each of them, and boom, you get your number. Now, this seems pretty straightforward, right? You know, you just plug the formula in. But there are a lot of things that you need to take into account when you do this. So DPI, what they look at is the maximum allowable number of students that you can get into a building, assuming that every single space you have is going to be used for a classroom. But ask any principal, and they'll tell you that they need room for other things, not just classrooms. You know, you also have, in addition to your core classes, you know, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, you also have electives that you teach. You may also have some sort of special room, what we now call a makerspace, or you might need room or spaces for small group instruction for students with special needs, AIG, ESL, EC services, hearing, speech, so on and so forth. We also encourage our principals to keep a data room. This is like a war room where they meet with their teachers and they strategize about how to improve their school, and they look at the outcomes and the information that their students are giving. You know, we've got to have a room for ISS, unfortunately. You know, we need a place to put our kids, to separate them when they're not doing their best. We now have online learning labs at our high schools, you know? We need a spot to put them when they're not enrolled in a class. And then we've got a lot of pre-K classrooms that are sprinkled into our elementary schools, and those are not funded in the same way, but yet they take up a classroom. So my point is that, you know, it's not super straightforward when it comes to calculating capacity, but we use that as sort of the guide for our work nonetheless, okay? So I'm going to show you some spreadsheets in just a few minutes that show the calculations and breakdowns for each of our schools. I would like to point out that in years past, to address capacity issues, we've had mobile units on our schools. And we've also had things like teachers that teach on a cart, right? So they'd move around. They might not have their own classroom, but they would push into other teachers' classrooms when they have their planning periods. Right now, we don't have any mobile units on any of our campuses that are being used for classrooms, okay? So we have two or three left, but I think they're due to be demolished and hauled off soon because they're near end of life. So, let's take a look then at what's happening with our enrollment. You look at page four, there's a chart and a graph which shows our daily membership trend since 2012. And below that is a graph, a bar graph. The red and the green together make up the total number of school-aged children that reside in our county. So what you can tell is that in the past 10, 11 years, that's remained constant. So the total number of children really hasn't increased or decreased much, but what has changed is the number of green to red. The red is us, Granville County Public Schools, and the green are the charters. So we've continued to lose enrollment. Part of that is because the number of charter schools continues to increase. And if you look at the next page, if you just kind of flip over, it's the back of that one, on page five, you can see that we now send children to 37 different charter schools. So sometimes people think about charters, oh, that's just the ones in Granville County, right? No, I mean, we send children literally across the state. We send, you know, our tax dollars from the county, they follow those children. And some of these are quite far away. So that trend, back on page four, is quite obvious. So if you'll turn to page six, you'll see this is our capacity information. And I'd like to draw your attention to the third blue column, which is the current capacity based on DPI's manner of calculation, okay? And that sits, if you just, you can follow it by school. The elementary schools are the first set of rows, the middle school are the next set, and then our high schools at the bottom. As a district total, according to DPI calculations, we're sitting at about 60, 68% capacity. So we're just a little more than 2/3 full as a district. Now, like me, you may be drawn to sort of the outlier numbers here, and I noticed right away when I was doing these and looking at this, that Granville Early College is just sitting out there totally different. It's at 164%. Well, I will make just a little qualifying statement. Early College, their students in the upper grades don't attend their class, don't go to their classes at the Early College High School. They take almost all of their courses across the street at Vance-Granville Community College. So only about 2/3 of the students are in that building adjacent to the library on a given day. The upperclassmen go across the street and take classes in the Vance-Granville building. So the school is full, make no mistake. We have waiting lists, and we do a lottery for students to get in, but it's certainly not, you know, each class does not have double, again, the number of students crammed in, okay? The class sizes are actually quite reasonable at that school. But it is something to just note. It kind of sticks out compared to the rest of the data, and I wanted to make mention of that. And of course, Granville Early College serves students throughout the entire county. Anyone in the entire county can apply to Early College. And in fact, most all of our schools now are considered choice schools, which means families can attend any of these schools even though they may be outside their attendance zone, but we don't necessarily provide transportation. All right, the next couple of pages just evidence some of the reports that get submitted to DPI. We're required to do this every five years, and in fact, Commissioner, Chairman Hemen signed off on this recently, as did Mr. Richardson, saying that they had received it. We, you know, made sure we gathered the data carefully and submitted it, and that's part of how that is reported to the state. But you'll see, if you look back at that capacity chart, there are yellow columns as well on page six. And that's what we call optimum capacity, and that's probably what, if you asked a principal, you know, what would be a little better than just cramming as many children as you possibly could, but allowing for a little flexibility in space? And those optimal, or local capacity, optimal capacity figures are what they would prefer to see. Because at some point, you sort of, there's a diminishing return. If you just cram 35 children in every classroom, and no teacher gets to use their classroom during their planning, and you have mobile units and so on, and your hallways are so, you know, jam-packed, and then you have cafeterias with six lunches a day, it just becomes too much. That's something that Wake County is actually facing, you know, with all their growth in some of their schools. So that yellow is probably more ideal for what we would want to look at. So this brings us, you know, we've sort of identified the problem. We've got, you know, an issue with enrollment, charter schools expanding, more charters coming online. We can see what our capacity is at. We know that we have space, so what do we do? It's terribly inefficient to continue operating the way we are. It's not a smart allocation of our precious resources. There, you know, also implications for the academic opportunities for students. We know that, for example, when we merged Mary Potter with Northern Granville Middle School, the number of electives that the students could take almost more than doubled. So, you know, not only does it save us money, but it increases the opportunities for our So what have we been doing to try to address this? Well, as I said, right shortly after Dr. McLean came, there was, you know, quite a changeover in our board. Dr. Willam became chair just before that, and work began immediately to take this head on. Right away, we moved to sell the Creedmore Annex Building, which the city of Creedmore purchased. We disposed of a residential property we had owned that we discovered that we owned for quite a while. We merged J.F. Webb School of Health and Life Sciences with J.F. Webb Comprehensive High School and saved a significant amount of money there. That Health and Life Sciences program continues. Those same courses are still offered to the students on that campus, so they haven't missed a beat. Principal Rice has done a great job of helping that program grow at J.F. Webb High School. When, as I said, when we merged Mary Potter with Northern Granville, it doubled the size of an element of a middle school in the northern part of the county, which streamlined and made our personnel more efficient. The economies of scale that Mr. Richardson and I have talked about in many meetings really plays into effect. You know, there's that sweet spot for the size of a school. It truly makes a difference in how your staffing works. You make a school too small, the number of opportunities for children diminishes. So then, we moved and closed Toller. I know it was a very difficult decision for this board and, you know, disrupted the community quite a bit. However, there was a considerable cost savings there. Just a quick update, we're set to do a closing on that in next week. We're hopeful that that will go through, and we'll be able to use some of the proceeds from that to help address the buildings that we do have. So then that kind of brought us to the efforts in the southern part of the county, because the board had done a lot of work in the northern part. And they began studying several different options. As I said before, there was this idea of to close a southern elementary school and then do something about Hawley. And so we sort of worked on both of those issues simultaneously. It was determined by the board that the two best or least worst options for closing a southern elementary school were closing Creedmore or Wilton Elementary. So those studies were developed over the summer of 2020. Several meetings were held, feedback was given, the studies were revised, and the board met in October to address this issue down at Butterstone Middle School, I believe. And at that time, they decided to just hit the pause button. Because we were still in the midst of a pandemic, and there were some unanswered questions, some uncertainty about the strategy, on how to approach all of this, they deferred any decisions. And at that time, they made a motion to set up a strategic task force to address reorganization in the school district. Since that board meeting, the strategic task force has convened. Some of you are members of that, I believe. I know our board members, commissioners, Mr. Phelps has been in attendance, we've got community members, we have parents, family members that are involved, been attending. We've had three meetings, some really courageous thinking and rich discussions have come out of that. And the findings from that task force are going to be presented to our Board of Education on April 19th at a special work session, okay? So while that work was going on with the elementary schools, and they hit the pause button, there was also this issue of Hawley. What do we do about Hawley? Because as we've all seen, the campus is in pretty bad state. You know, the buildings, portions of it are quite old, and something needs to be done. So the idea initially was, well, what if we renovated an elementary school and made it into a middle school? And Ms. Peel, who's just arrived, Ms. Peel from LS3P, her and her team did some research about that and looked into what would the cost be to convert an elementary school into a middle school. They looked at Creedmore, they looked at Mount Energy as possible sites. Well, they considered all southern area sites, but they zeroed in because of the size of the campus and what was available into Creedmore and Mount Energy. And what they determined, it was going to be very expensive to upgrade or to convert an elementary school into a middle school. You know, you have to think about things like plumbing and fixtures and the layout and the size of the classrooms, and there was no gym, so on and so forth. So it just really, it didn't make good sense. Also, it couldn't yield a middle school that was big enough to serve everyone. So we turned our attention then towards, well, what do we do? What about renovating G.C. Hawley? So that's when we commissioned Catherine and her team to come back and take a look. And then she actually did her work last fall and winter, and then was preparing to present to this joint meeting in March, okay? So you can kind of see, we're coming back full circle. So during our walking tours last week, I believe each of you got a binder with her presentation, and she's going to go through that in just a minute. But, you know, this idea of renovating Hawley, the reason this is important, whether or not we do this, is because this is the key puzzle piece that's going to help the board decide which direction to take. What is the next step going to be? How does this fit into the master plan for reorganizing the entire district to make things better for all children in this county? So that's why this has become so important, this discussion about Hawley. Finally, I'll just, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, finding solutions. I know that the board, they've been dedicated to pushing forward and working with this. In our task force, as you can see outlined in this document, we settled on sort of three strategic ways to address this challenge. Number one, status quo. Do, just don't do anything, just keep going the way we're going, hope things are going to get better, we'll work through it. Well, that was summarily rejected by everyone on that task force. No one thought that status quo was a good idea. They all felt like unanimously that something needed to be done. So then they turned their attention to sort of these two other areas or two buckets, I guess you could call them. One was sort of short-term temporary solutions, and then long-term, more permanent solutions. And so those findings are going to be presented to our board on April 19th. So with that, I will kind of end my presentation. I will point out that if you keep reading in this document, you'll see some of the legal requirements when it comes to school closures or mergers, that our attorney Dubson has provided our board, that we've been very diligent in following as we've worked through this. You can also see a detailed sort of play-by-play on all of the votes and all of the actions and all the steps that have been taken by our Board of Education going back to 2018. And of course, all those are included in the minutes, and the motions and the votes in our board docs are online system. And then the last two links in the document are, that are referenced, are the previous architect's study. She's got the updated one tonight, the numbers changed a little. And then the IPSAC study, which is a study that was conducted by NC State three years ago to help sort of look at the projections for growth, economic growth and development in our county. So I'll stop and see if there are any questions I can try to answer about this document. All right, if not, I will ask Ms. Peel to come to the podium, and I'm going to go sit down over at the table and drive the presentation for her portion of this, which will be addressing the potential renovation of G.C. Hawley Middle School. So thank you, Ms. Peel.
It's good to see all of you, appreciate all of you coming out last week for our tours of G.C. Holly, so you had a good opportunity to see the condition the school is in today. Just a little bit of background on myself and my firm, LS3P, formerly Boney Architects, we've been in business since the 1920s in North Carolina and have worked on, I think, 75 of the 100 counties in the state for school projects. And I'm getting ready to hit my 33rd anniversary with the firm, so I've been doing this for a long time. And I've been really fortunate to work with a lot of districts, some that are fast-growing, such as Wake County, but also a lot of districts in the state that have very similar issues that you have. Recently, we worked with Lenore County, which is down in the Kinston area, and their challenge was that they were losing students, as you have lost students in this county, and they had a lot of facilities that were in very poor condition. So we worked through a plan that ultimately resulted in a bond referendum, and we ended up closing a number of schools, but we built some new schools, and we were able to consolidate a number of the elementary schools in particular. And, you know, it's always tough closing a school because of the community sentiment and the history, but we found that we were able to give them much better facilities by consolidating a number of schools. And so I know that that's a lot of what y'all have been looking at as well. So again, thank you for having me, and thank you for this opportunity to do a study for G.C. Holly. As Dr. Winburne said, we looked originally at moving Holly into a potentially Creedmore Elementary School, and then were asked to come back and look at what it would take to do a renovation and additions to Holly to bring it up to today's standards. So next slide, Dr. Winborn. So again, our, the concept study, the purpose was really to have a, really a detailed program analysis to meet, get the school to meet DPI requirements and other specialized programs that Holly has, creating a concept design approach, base bid with some additional alternates that could be choices for upgrades, providing a preliminary opinion of probable cost, and then a schedule of what design and construction would look like. As Dr. Winborn mentioned, we originally put this study together about 14 months ago, so I did go back and update it based on current construction prices and also a schedule moving forward if you chose to do this project. So this is the existing campus, which again, you guys are all familiar with. Next slide, this shows you the existing floor plan with the ages of various buildings, going back to the 1960s. There was some new construction in 1991 of the media center, and also in addition to the gym and some renovations. Building C is, as you saw, was one of the original buildings in pretty poor condition. And then Building D, which is the newer cafeteria that was constructed in 2005, with some classroom additions at the D building and renovation work. So we looked very closely at all of these buildings, at their age, and the possibility of which pieces do you keep and which buildings does it really make more sense to demolish? Next slide. So as you heard on our tour, Buildings A and C are the ones that are in the poorest condition. Building A in particular has a lot of site drainage issues in that center courtyard. We have uninsulated windows and walls in that building. Next slide. Undersized corridors and challenges such as having putting, having to put lockers in the classrooms because the quarters are so small, deteriorating ceilings, and then a lot of moisture infiltration into Building A in particular. If you saw some of the peeling paint, the moisture is coming through the exterior walls of that building. We've got exposed wiring and cabling, major ADA issues, and we do have asbestos tile in Building C. And as I mentioned on the tour, one of the major problems is that the HVAC system does not provide proper humidification. So that's what's causing a lot of the moisture issues in that building. As we walked around, you saw some of the machines that the staff have put in to dehumidify that building. Building A1, we're calling, it is that 1991 media addition. It is in better shape, however, it's, it does have some program issues in terms of meeting current DPI program. And we did look at whether we could keep that building, but the challenges would be just sort of tearing everything down around it structurally and from a mechanical HVAC and electrical perspective, there would be some real challenges in having that, that piece of that building hanging out there and then trying to tie a new building into it. So what we proposed for demolition is Building A and Building C, and keeping Buildings B and D with some possible renovations. This is the gym that y'all met in last week. Again, the original structure is from the 60s, but the new building, new construction of the multipurpose and locker room was done in 1991. It does need some work, needs new HVAC, and at that back of stage area, as you all viewed, was, really needs a major renovation as well. So air conditioning needs to be picked up, and we have some plumbing issues in that Building D, as we mentioned, is in, is in good shape. The cafeteria is relatively new, was built in 2005, and Building D had also a major renovation in 2005, new windows. They did not do central air at the time, but they did renovate the rest of the building. So the exterior of D is in fairly good condition, and as I mentioned, the cafeteria also is in good shape. We would want to add central air conditioning and do just a little bit of minor renovation in Building D. So looking at our proposed design approach, you know, obviously, we've got kids in school here, so if we tore down Building A, we would be basically losing classroom space for the sixth graders and seventh graders. So it's a significant project, and it's, you know, where are you going to house these students? We did look at the idea of leasing four of the four classroom module units. You see the little rectangles that are on the lower right, we would have a place that we could situate those on the site and house the sixth and seventh graders for a year while we did this project. Another possibility is to look at another school where you could relocate the students for just a year, and as you have some empty school buildings, as you've done some of your consolidation, you maybe have a place that you could house them for that period of time. So the proposed design approach, we have a base design that has a very, a simple, a low-slope roof, not a flat roof. And then we did some alternates for a standing seam sloping metal roof, which is sort of the preferred roof that you'd like to put on a school if you could, a new entry approach, and also an alternate for potentially a new auditorium. So this is the base design. We've moved the entrance back, and the entry lobby would be right at admin. One of the things I noted as we walked through our tour is when you come to this school now, and you're very separated from where administration is. The ideal situation is that when someone comes up, a visitor comes up to the school, your receptionist in your admin lobby is right there so that you've got good security and good visibility of someone coming into the building. Right now, you have a camera, but you don't, you don't have that immediate access. So we would move the entry back, create a new admin suite with guidance and some resource classrooms, a new sixth and seventh grade wing with a new media center and a new fine art section. All of that would connect to both the existing gym and Building D. So you would have everything under one roof, and the students would not have to go outside and go under canopies to connect to the buildings. As you walk through again, you saw even though there's some fencing, that campus is pretty much wide open, and it would be easy for someone to come into one of the doors on the backside of the campus. So this is our proposed floor plan. Again, it shows you the new admin and guidance area, classrooms for sixth and seventh grade, music and art classrooms, a new media center, and that connection over to Building D. So this shows a concept design of the front entry, where you would have a new entry canopy adjacent to the, to the gymnasium and next to admin. Next slide. The new classroom wings, this would be looking at the end of the sixth grade wing, a new media center to the rear of the site. So the preliminary cost estimate for this base design, and this is assuming we would bid the project in the spring of 2022, which would be moving very rapidly forward with design. Additional inflation escalation needs to be at about 3% to 5% per year beyond the spring of 2020. We are seeing significant cost increases in steel, concrete, pretty much every building material. I'm sure you guys have been hearing of the shortages that are happening due to COVID, a lot of the factories that shut down, and they still have not caught back up. It's surprising how much construction has still gone on through the pandemic. There's still a lot going on in North Carolina. The renovation costs are included for the gym and for the eighth grade building, and then of course, what would be the temporary housing options for students for one year, either keeping them on campus in modular units or finding another place to house them for one year. So this shows that a base design, demolishing the existing buildings is going to run around 675,000. New 64,000 square foot building and site work, which would, could include some improvements such as a track, some new landscaping, would run around 16.6 million. The gym renovation would run around 750,000, and the eighth grade classroom building with additional, with adding air conditioning and some minor renovations, 875,000. So we had an estimated construction cost a year ago at 18.9 million, which would have assumed bidding this project pretty much in this timeframe now in 2021. If you add in a 3% to 5% inflation factor to get us another year in, you're looking at costs going up to around $20 million for just the construction costs. You would also have some ancillary costs, including professional services, new furniture and fixtures, and then a construction contingency at around 5%, which would add another $3 million to the project. So you're looking at somewhere around 22.7 to 3 million, $23 million for the total project cost with this base bid option. The temporary housing, if you did four large modular units for a year, would run 407,000 for that rental. The classroom setup, deliver and return runs about 970, and then you'd have some temporary canopies and utilities that would have to hook into those temporary buildings. So you're looking at about 1.5 million to house the students on the campus for a year. Again, there may be other options for temporary housing in the county for just one school year that we want to look into. So we priced some alternates such as a sloped standing seam metal roof that's shown here. You can see the changes to the renderings of the buildings. And it's sort of the premier roofing system, and again, we try to do it as much as we can on our schools. Would add about 2.2 million to the project to go with a standing seam metal roof. The other alternates were, one, to have a new entrance that's more towards the center of the new building, and also add alternate for an auditorium that we were asked to provide a cost on that as well. And this shows how that would connect in, the auditorium would be just across a hallway from the gym, so you could have a common lobby that's shared between the gym and the auditorium, and then creating a new main entrance that would sort of bring the visitors and others more to the center of the campus. So that shows you what that new entrance would look like. Again, that's with, showing it with the lower slope option for the roof, and you'd have a new turnaround at that location, and some handicap parking spaces. You have a bit of a challenge now with your gravel lot, you've got a couple of spaces that are paved for handicap access, but quite honestly, it's really too far away from the front door to meet ADA. And that shows a concept for the new auditorium. So the construction costs for a new auditorium run about 3.2 million with additional ancillary costs, you'd be at about 3.6 million or maybe 4 million with escalation to add the auditorium. So if you were to move ahead with this project, you're looking at about nine months of design time for the documents to be completed, around four months for approvals from Department of Public Instruction, your local building inspectors, and then around 13 months for construction. So you would be looking at 26 months total project duration. This would also assume two to three months for selection of architect prior to starting design. Our firm worked as a consultant, again, on this small study, but because this is a public project, the school district would be required to advertise for the selection of an architect and a design team for the project. So while we would certainly be interested in proposing, we would not necessarily be the ones that would be continuing the design process. This shows again, assuming a May 2021 start, which is very ambitious to think that you would get started this quickly, but just basing it on starting to, you know, really now, what it would look like. And again, that gives you an opening of this school in the fall of 2023. So you can see any decisions you make, you're looking at 26 months out before you could be ready to open this sort of renovated G.C. Holly. So now I hit you with a lot of information. Hopefully, y'all had a chance to really study it ahead of time and be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Peel.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Winborn, if you'll join Ms. Peel back at the podium. Board of Commissioners and Board of Education, I think probably the best way to do this, first I need to remind you, make sure as you speak to bring your microphone close to you. Our board uses virtual minutes, and so we want to make sure that we get those recorded. But what I'm thinking is probably if we'll start with Ms. Williams, let's work our way around the table. If you have comments or questions, we'll kind of go around, give everybody a chance first, and then if there is time left after that, we'll jump into a little more informal conversation, but want to make sure that everybody gets a time to go first. So Ms. Williams, do you have questions or comments?
Not right now.
All right. Commissioner Jay?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
No, not at this time right now.
Dr. Houlihan?
I don't understand why the price tag is so high. You know, it seems like the money amount is, and I'm, you know, it's just way out of bounds, but then maybe I don't understand. Can you give us a, just kind of an update about why it is so expensive?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you very well. Said that you, the cost estimate, why is so high?
Yeah, and just why it's so expensive, yeah, the cost estimate.
Well, I will tell you that new middle schools across the state are running anywhere from 45 to 50 million dollars right now. So, yeah, so I know it sounds really high, but that is the reality that we're dealing with today. Most of the school projects that we're doing are coming in around 230 to 250 a square foot and higher. So the good old days of $100 a square foot, which is where we were for a lot of years, we're just not seeing that now.
Well, I don't like what you just said, but thank you.
I'm sorry. Fair bad news, but it's, it's really crazy right now, and we've seen since, we had a dip back during the recession in 2008, 2009, up to about 10, that was, so school systems were getting a real bargain at that time, but we've had huge cost escalation since then.
Commissioner May?
None at this time.
All right. Dr. McKnight?
Yes, did you say there was going to be something done to the, like, athletic fields? Was that going to be addressed?
With the, with the estimate that we put in for the 16.6 million, we would have room within that budget to do some improvements to the fields, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, I do have one major question. So the other day when we were doing the tour, I asked, is there any of the school of G.C. Holly, G.C. Holly, that is the actual original back in the day when it was originally built and the historical part? Is there any, like, not like Joe Toll or here?
I think there were some other buildings on the site we didn't have originally, we didn't get, you know, we didn't have those records. Is that the question you're asking?
Yes.
But they were torn down over the years.
So that there is none of the original school there?
No.
Commissioner Cozart?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What would be the student capacity at the renovated school?
We figured, I think, around 650, just so we would have some growth at that school. I think we're 550 now. I think we're 550 now, approximately.
Close to six.
Close to six, so.
And I don't know. I know it's hard to do now these days. I understand, and I see some of the development down around the southern end of the county, but do we have any way of anticipating what the enrollment would be at this school two, three, four years down the road?
Thank you, Dr. Kozart. That's something that we have struggled to get a clear answer on. The question was about the projected growth for the southern part of the county. Our board actually invited many different community leaders, elected officials to come in and share their thoughts about that last spring, I believe it was. The mayors, the manager from Seguassa, city managers, and so on. I think that there's sort of this consensus that we will have growth, but the issue is, you know, where, and there are some things constraining growth right now. So there's some uncertainty about that. So that is kind of the wild card, I think, that you've identified. It's difficult to get a clear, concrete answer to that question. I think that's fair to say.
That's all I have, man.
Ms. LeBarrette?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Cairn?
Thank you for all coming, and no thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Not at this time, Karen.
Mr. Peace?
Yes, the total cost of 22,797, that doesn't include any of the alternates that you talked about.
That's correct.
What would be the total cost with alternates?
If you added both, the auditorium and the, jump back over here, and the standing seam metal roof, I mean, you're looking at adding another, gosh, six, seven million dollars. So you could be upwards, could be close to 29 million, 30 million dollars if you added all those alternates together.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Gooch?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we just kind of want to open the floor. Dr. Winborn, is there anything else you want to add that maybe we have forgotten or anything you've thought of since we presented?
Well, no, sir. I would just maybe kind of close with these comments that were sort of the summary of this document. You know, as, as our school district becomes more efficient with the use of our space, then we'll have more resources to increase opportunities for our students, right? And so when that happens, we'll also have fewer facilities that need improvement, that need work, which will make our operations be a lot more efficient, which will in turn save us more money. And that's going to improve the outcomes for all of our children, okay? I truly believe that. And this is going to attract new enrollment. So it'll be better for the children that we have, but it could also potentially attract new students to come back, which ultimately in the future could increase our funding. So it's, it's a bit cyclical, and it's cause and effect. These things are linked to one another in many ways. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Ms. Williams?
Yes. Let's suppose that in 10 years, this, let's say this school were built, and in 10, 15 years, there was an extensive amount of growth. Is there sufficient land and area there to add another wing, should it be needed?
Yes, there is. And one of the reasons that we did the layout that we did is that at the end of that sixth grade wing, you could keep going. So we always like to look at, where do you go next? It's really interesting, when my firm started back in the 1920s with Leslie Boney, who drew everything by hand, we found a lot of the old plans, and he always dotted in, where does the next piece go? And so as we've gone back and actually renovated or added to some of the schools from the 1920s and 30s, we could pull that, those plans out and see where's the next place to go. So it's something you always have to keep in mind to be able to accommodate growth. And the site, I think, is 26 acres, 27 and a half acres. So there's, there's room to add on for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner May?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood. Potentially cost around 30 million, not a complete restoration, big part, but not complete. And traditionally, what are the construction overrun percentages for a project this size?
That's why I have the 5% contingency plugged in there. Typically, for new construction, we would want to be anywhere from 2 to 3%. This far out, since the design has not been completed yet, I just plugged 5% in. So we always want to include that as part of the budget so that you can cover those contingencies.
But the reality of it is, and again, I know everything is fluid, you could be looking at more than 30 million?
Well, we've already built the contingency in. So that estimate, if you go back and look at the base bid, already had that 5% in there.
So you would own it if it went over 5%?
Yeah. And again, we may not be the ones that's, that's going to be designing it. So we're just, I'm just, we're working, this isn't even at a schematic level. This is a very broad concept level. And so there may be ways to tighten this design up as, as you get into it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay. So I just want to give you some background of kind of some of the decisions that have been made by the board and the task force. The task force were actually, I was told by our board to appoint a task force at the end of our meeting in October where they pressed the pause button on making a decision about elementary schools. So we still have a decision out here about elementary schools we're trying to grapple with. This Holly work has gone on for almost two years now, working through this process. And so the strategic task force, which Commissioner May, County Manager Felts, and a few of our board members sit on, one of the main areas that they grappled with was what could we do with capital needs to make sure that we're being the very best stewards of what we have? And so these are some of the things we've been grappling with and some of the things that Dr. Winborn talked about. And so I kind of want to give you an opportunity that we gave the task force. One of the things that we laid out to them, obviously, I would guess your idea probably would be, I'm going to put words in your mouth for this part, is that you wouldn't be okay with the status quo, because obviously it's not working. We have funding gaps, we are losing students, enrollment, those type of things. So what we asked our strategic task force to do was to give us some short-term fixes and some long-term fixes. And so I want to throw it out there for you for the next few minutes while we have time to discuss. If you were sitting in this seat, what would be some ideas that you might have? Maybe something we've missed, maybe something that just you've heard down the line, maybe a combination of things. What are some, some things that you see on the horizon for Grandville County schools as far as working in this facility gap? Just kind of jump out there. Just use your mic when you do it, though.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As I think about this school as it relates to the other middle schools, it's one of the, and I look at this from a student success perspective, and, you know, this school, Holly, is one of the better middle schools we have as it pertains to student success. We just instituted an IB program there, and I just think that that needs to be taken into consideration as we move forward.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Other board members or commissioners?
I'll chime in here then. Since I'm not from here, and I don't know the dates and which schools were built first and when, and obviously, I've been to several of the schools recently, and to me, they really, really could use some of this money to upgrade those schools, to keep those schools the best they can be, versus trying to upgrade a school that really, that's a lot of money to upgrade a school. And I'm concerned about that, that, you know, there's others, if we do this for this school and not put money into these other schools, where are we going to be in two or three years when these other schools are in the condition this one's in? That's my concern.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dr. O'Leary?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can one of you go ahead?
I'll go.
Excuse me. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go.
Uh-uh. Go ahead, go ahead.
You're more important.
No, uh-uh. I'm the least one. Well, anyway, I'll go since you had.
You're right ahead. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll go then. Thank you for the, for the presentation, and, and, Mr. Winborn, for the, starting off in the meeting with the introduction and everything, to where we at. I would just like to say, and thank y'all for the tour. The tour was very eye-opening. And I took the tour, I looked at the tour, and Holly School is in very, very bad shape. And to throw that much money at, into re-renovating a school, you probably could just build a school, what you gonna, what you gonna push it off and start all over? But this is just my opinion, and my, I'm just throwing it out there at you. I look at the breakdown of, of how many students in Webb School, how many students in South Grandville, how many students in Grandma Central. If we could go back to having a high school in the, in the southern end of the county, and a high school in the northern end of the county, and take and move Holly School into one of those high schools down there, I don't think it would take you much. It ain't going to take you 30 million dollars to, to make that happen. I can't see throwing money into, as the old says, throwing money into an empty hole. And I, like you, I think Chairman Hammond asked, what, how many, what is the, is the original parts of that building, is still there? I think the answer was no, because you have done away with it. I mean, you have, you have remodeled and did away with the old part. So you're not closing down Holly. Holly has already been closed. It just got the name up there. And then if you can take and consolidate some of those schools down there, that, like Mount Energy or Wilton and Tar River, consolidate one of those, two of the, one of those schools into, to, so you have two schools, that two schools down on their end. When they first built Mount Energy and, and Grandma Central, things were booming. We were expecting more people to come into the county and have three or four children. But the people came, but the children didn't come. You know, we used to, when we, when I come along, most, you don't, you'll see people with four and five children. Nowadays, sometimes said, one, they said, that's enough. So that just my, something I'm throwing, I think this is throwing out that you can look at.
Okay.
And appreciate the, the time for letting me say that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Dr. O'Leary?
I'm not saying anything after that. No, seriously. I thank you for your comments. I just want to say that, you know, your board is an elected board, the commissioners, who has the money. And our board is an elected board who doesn't have the money. And so obviously, we have a relationship at times that may be a little bit contrary or whatever. But given, that, that aside, we need to somehow figure out a way to work together to resolve this. Yes, it is our responsibility to make the decisions to what school closes and all that kind of stuff. And I understand completely 18, 19, 20 million dollars and all that, but we're in a dilemma. We, we can make the tough decisions. We already have and lived through it, but we know we have to do something. And, and we, I think we're just, we just need to work together to see if we can figure out together a win-win situation. We may not be able to. You may not want to jump into this fire. And of course, that's your, that's your, that's what you can do. But the more we can work together to figure out what's best to do, that we can afford, that would impact efficiency and so forth, the better we are in this county. And so I just throw that out, you know, just throw it out as an idea. If we could work together to resolve some of these things, I really think it could be a win-win. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Dr. O'Leary. Other board members, commissioners? Mr. Gooch?
Yes. And, you know, the county already puts about, was it, almost 40% of our budget goes to the, to the schools. So that's a huge portion of the entire budget for the county. And it's easy to move up the scale. I know 40 years, you get to making a little more money, you get more income, you adjust your level of living up. But then when hard times come, it's hard to come down. And I'm just wondering how much expansion administrative-wise and teacher-wise we've done that can be consolidated or cut back to match the number of students you have now. You know, what cutbacks has been done in recurring cost? I see you've cutbacks in recurring costs for facilities, but, you know, there's other areas that you could look for. And, you know, I understand, it's, it's a hard decision, and it's tough. And we need to work together, and we need to be confident that everyone's pulling the same direction and doing what's necessary to adjust to the number of students you have now, or the anticipated number you're going to have in five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others?
Yes, I would like to just say, you know, looking at the information and understanding where we are with the school system, and definitely, Dr. Winborn, with the capacity data that you have here. And we do not have but three middle schools, and they're all on opposite ends. So there is no consolidation of these middle schools here. And then looking at the, you know, high schools that we, definitely, we went out last week and actually visited three of the high schools. And quite a few, quite, quite a few, maybe three or four more with the elementary schools. I was looking at the count and the admission there for that. And it is something that we have to work together for. And I agree with the statements, you know, the, this school is really old. We, I did go out on Monday when we looked, visited with Holly. And I really think that we can find something better to do with our funding than to at this time put 30 million plus into a school that I saw for the first time, because I'm not from, I, you know, I've been in Grandville County 10 years, no one in the system. And looking at Holly, when I went there to visit, when we did that visit, I didn't even really think that the health department would have that school open from what I saw. I really did not. We need to do something for our young folks. We need to let them be able to go to a school that they want to go to and feel comfortable going to. So we really need to look at what we're going to do as far as getting our young folks in schools that they, and bringing more folks back into our schools. So we really need to look at what we're going to do as far as getting our young folks in schools that they, and bringing more folks back into our schools and stop losing so many of our folks. But I just think that we need to look at probably some consolidations. If we're seeing here the capacity of J F Webb, uh, is one thousand three oh four, we're to six oh five. South Granville, one thousand seventy-five, we're at six ninety. And one thousand eighty-three for Granville Central and we're at six ninety-six. You know, we have four high schools, but we don't have but three middle schools. And we can't bust these children around to consolidate a middle school. But we know that, I don't think that thirty million plus to renovate that school and bring it back to where it need to be. Or to get our children possibly in some other, looking at with the schools that we have, what we possibly can get our students and, uh, back to. Maybe closing one of the other high schools and getting them into a good, one of those high schools. We just really need to look at something and it's for our young folks. And I just don't think we're, we need to work together to do that. The county commissioners are saying we're forty percent of the budget. I tell you, our future leaders, our students, our young adults, they need something that they're gonna be able to look forward to in Granville County. Now, if we're using up forty percent of your budget. I don't see where it's going. I don't see it. And we, but we need to do what we need to do for our future leaders. And we need to step up to the plate and do it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Others? Commissioner Karen?
This is, uh, Tim Karen. I appreciate the opportunity, um, and I thank you for the candor. Never been asked to be Tanya Harding before and kneecap a board. But I can't see y'all going out and spending all this time and effort and special task force to come back and not have you know that I am absolutely not for a bond referendum to put that much money into Holly Middle School. I love the school and the history behind it, but I would just assume move that placard to another location and put those children into a better situation than they're in now today. I was embarrassed to be at that school tour.
There, you got it. Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know, and now I've seen the problem for real. And. I don't want to pontificate on that because it's just not an appropriate situation. And moving forward with the post-COVID, um, era and the remote learning options that students are gonna be. Physical presence of those children that choose to go to school or the parents choose to send them to school is gonna be reduced. And it looks like the idea of having a remote option is gonna be the, the, the norm moving forward. So these capacity numbers that we're looking at. Are not necessarily well-fixed without the historical data to go with them. So I think that the amount of actual butts we have in seats is gonna become quite apparent after we consider the data from this year. And then moving forward with the parents' wishes to who's gonna go back to your Plan A, which I applaud y'all on for, for taking that, um, step to move forward, uh, to put these kids back in school, uh, more frequently than they are currently. So I thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hammond?
Again, I, it's not that, um, forty percent is a large amount of ours, our, our budget, but it's, it's not that. It's the putting the money into a hole that's sinking when we have other schools that are starting to sink, but haven't sunk as low as, as us Holly has. And if I'm gonna put money into something, I'd rather put it into a school that's just starting to sink, that hasn't sunk. And this one has sunk. I'm sorry, like you said, walking through that school, I would pull my child out of there immediately because it's not safe. Um, in any means. So, but that's just my opinion and you all are the ones that do have to make the tough decisions. We're the money, the ones that have to come up with the money. And I'm not, like I say, I'm, the money is not as much of the problem as putting it into a situation that I don't see where we can come up. I just see us going down with all the schools. And there's got to be a better way of getting these schools back up to grade so that if I were a parent that had a child in a school, I would want that child in that school because I felt they were safe there. And, and not, you know, with mold issues or whatever. You know, we've fixed most of those, but still, there's some of those kinds of issues in each one of the schools I've been in recently that. They look like schools I was in back when I was in school and I was in school back when the dinosaurs walked. You know, so, uh, we've got to do something to keep these babies safe. They're our babies. And we've got to do something to keep them safe, keep them in our county, because if we don't keep them in our county, they don't bring back that tax money, we can't give it to the schools. We're sinking all the way around if we don't do this. So we've got to find a way to make this work. And if we have to move the placard to central middle, high school right now and make that Holly Middle School, change the name. Let's do it. And then let's go on to some of these other schools that need to be repaired and brought back up to standard. And maybe we'll get some of these kids back. If these schools are in, in a condition that they can walk in and have air conditioning, have, you know, places, safe places to learn. Let's see if that helps. Unfortunately, all these people that moved in down south didn't have any babies because they were senior citizens.
You're right.
You know, and their babies are grown up and gone on. And I'm one of those. So, but I still care about our babies. We've got to do something and we've, like you said, Mr. O'Leary, we've got to work together. And I'm willing to work with you, but not on this one. Not on this one, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Can I say? Let's, uh.
Commissioner Jay?
Mr. Chairman and Madam Chairman, I, I'd just like to say this. When I walked into Holly School, I thought about fifty years ago when I walked into total school. And to me, it looked like it hadn't grown in it. Anything, it hadn't been done. I mean, it was just. It made me remember back fifty years ago. And, and I'm not trying to tell you about my age, but, you know, I've been around a long time. But we got to, we have to do something, we have to do something other, I know, about, uh. About the condition that school is in. Because, uh, sending our ch, our, our babies to, uh. To something like. To something like that. I wouldn't want to be telling nobody I went, I went to Holly. I, I mean, what I'm saying, if I was, if I, if I was a middle, uh, middle, was in middle school. And someone asked me what school that I went to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, myself, I wouldn't say, I said, I went to Holly. I just go to a school in Granville County. That's what I would say. Because. Going to a school in, in that bad a shape. And we sending our children to that school. Uh, like Sister said, we, we need to send our. Only way we gonna, only way we gonna get back some of the, the students that have left us. We got to prove, we got to sell ourselves that we's in better shape. And then. Uh, that's all I got to say, but I'm gonna shut up.
Mr. Commissioner Smith?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I'll just say that. Like some of the rest of them said, my oldest granddaughter went to Holly School. Academics of was fine. And I would have to occasionally pick her up, but I had never gone inside until last week. And I truly was appalled that not only our children had to go and be in that environment, but also thinking of the teachers and the staff members that had to be in that environment. And I thought about it, well, good Lord, we in two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm like, I don't believe, Commissioner Jay might have mentioned it to me, it took me back to my days at STEM. And of course, we know now STEM is completely demolished. I think the Ag Building and the Home Make Building may be there, but the building itself and the gym is gone. But I thought, Grand Mechanic can do better than this. Uh, for our students. And just my opinion, I think we have to look at numbers and I think we have to be realistic and. We all know, we, we put our names out to be elected. That sometimes we had to make choices that wasn't, wasn't, uh. Wasn't really truly accepted by the public. But we knew we had to make choices for the betterment of everybody, not just a handful. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to look at, uh, the numbers and I think it may be time to, all of us have to make some hard choices and maybe do some consolidations. And I'll just conclude my comments with thank you and I appreciate the architect coming.
Mr. Chair.
I just conclude, so thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. LeBrecht?
I'll go after you. Um. So the building aspect aside, I think one of the reason, and, and I'm, I'm in a bit of a different position because my kids aren't all in school at all yet. And so something that I think is happening with charter schools is we've got parents who are anticipating or trying to anticipate. What their kids are gonna, gonna want to do whenever they get older. And so they're trying to put them into a school that's gonna, you know, set them on this track and give them all of the things that they need. And I think something that Granville County does well, um, already, after having visited the high schools last week, is offering a diverse and hands-on approach to learning. And the fact that the schools are offering what they're offering at the capacity that they're at is really kind of impressive. And I think that if we can get more students in those schools and offer them more electives and really give, give them more. Um, diverse education opportunities, I think it's gonna bring more students back from the charter schools because I think. One of the things that maybe parents do or do not realize is whenever you send your kid to a smaller school, you're really pigeonholing some of their opportunities. And not giving them the wide base that they really all should have. So, buildings aside, I think we really need to look at increasing numbers in the schools. Um, however we choose to do that, so that we can really give the students the full, well-rounded approach that a community school should, should offer.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrecht. Mr. Peace?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I, uh, what, let me first of all, uh, respond to what, uh, Commissioner Jay had said about there not being any thing of Holly School left there. Uh, according to. Uh, current nineteen sixty-two is the latest thing that's on here. Of course, I never attended Holly. But, uh, I'm, I'm up in the age and my sister taught there in the fifties and forties. And, uh. I used to go there in the mid-fifties and the early fifties. So. Once that school was built, nothing, I guess, around here that was built out of what that school was built out originally is still standing. So I just need to clear that up. And, uh, it sounds like. Uh. And I know Holly could be in a whole lot better shape than it is. But it's in the shape it's in because. The people with the money in Granville County didn't give them the money they needed to fix it. And I'm not trying to blame anybody, but I'm just telling it like it is. Uh. And if we don't do any better than we've been doing, other schools in Granville County are gonna look like Holly before long. So you need to keep that in mind as we talk about how bad it is, and I know it's bad. And I know how it got that way. And I think some of you people that's talking about how bad it is know how it got that way too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Did I miss somebody over here? Dr. McKnight?
So. This is interesting because I keep hearing the number of about thirty million, you know, thrown around, we don't want to put money behind that. And we've talked about consolidation. So I guess my question to the architect first is, is there a different path where we're not biting off thirty million all at one take? Is there something that we can maybe do some type of phased-in approach? Where we could put off Building D and put off the gym for another ten, fifteen years and ju, just address Building A? Is, is that a possibility or does this all have to be done at once?
No, you could certainly delay the renovation and just do the new, the new sixty-four thousand square foot building that would replace Building A and C. Um, it's just from an economic standpoint, having a contractor on site, you would save money, but by doing all that work together. If you tried to bid the renovation later as standalone projects, you're probably gonna pay more money.
Okay. And, and I guess my other question, I guess, is to my commissioners here. Because I, I've heard that it's not probably the best use of money to put all of this on Holly. We'd rather spread it around and address some of the other schools. So is that what you guys are saying that you'd rather do with twenty million dollars or so? Instead of putting it at Holly, you'd rather put it on these other schools? I mean, because either way. Sounds like the money has to be spent. Either it needs to be spent on Holly or it needs to be spent on bringing these other schools up to keep them from getting to the Holly State. So. I, I guess if, if we have a better idea of which direction you're leaning on, that could definitely help us with our decision-making.
Dr. McKnight, I'm here and I'm saying I don't want to spend no money. That's what I'm here.
Uh, that's not an option, I don't think.
Is that, did any of your comments, Dr. McKnight?
That, that's into my comments.
Commissioner May?
I think it's a fair question, but the reality of it is the county budget's limited. That's the bottom line. We're still paying on Tar River. And, uh, and, and we still have.
Use your mic, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? The bottom line is that the, uh, the budget's limited. Forty percent of the county budget goes to schools. We still owe money on Tar River. So we have to look at options in which we can create a competitive, um, school district with the funds that we have, working together. Laying the school, do what they do best and utilizing the tools and the mindset they have as educators to form curriculum. And design something that will, that will compete with a charter program. And at the other end. Uh, we have to look at where we can get the best bang for our bucks in incremental manners to improve specifically, in my view, because I, I've gone to the high schools. We need to look at our high schools. And Oxford Webb and Granville, and South Granville High School are two landmarks in this county. They're beyond landmarks. If you're from Granville County, you graduated from one of them. And the bottom line is that, uh. They, they both need work. But we'll have to work together on how we get there incrementally because it's not gonna be an overnight task. But if we can make a turn on the curriculum, improve our academics. We've got to understand when it comes to Wilton and the elementary schools, in my view, and that part of the county is, is we're dealing with COVID and we're dealing with a highly successful program in Wilton. A highly successful, and it will not be the same. You just can't take it and pick it up and move it. There's a reason why it's highly successful. It's a school of choice and parents specifically want their kids there because it's so successful. Now. It is inefficient in space, so we have to deal with that. But the bigger issue I think that we're dealing with is dealing with the middle school issue right now. So when we talked in these task forces and we had all these different meetings, one thing that came across clear from the citizenry and those, those who are involved in education. Change in this manner is traumatic. It, it's gonna cause a lot of pain to some folks. So whatever we go about doing, whatever you go about doing, decisions you're making, I just ask you do it strategically, aligning with our academics so we can create a competitive academic, uh, environment. Enhancing our CTE program so we can compete and, and compete and get our kids that aren't going to college prepared for the next level. And we can make a difference. As the county works toward economic development and trying to bring other business in and grow our, grow our tax base, that's the bottom line, we can incrementally get there. We can't keep dismissing our high schools and we can't, in my view, no insult to anyone's thought process. But thirty million dollars on an incomplete project, because it is, because you're not redoing the whole thing. It's too much money spent. On a school that's not new. And I wasn't happy when I walked in. I've been to Holly before, I've been, I've been to most of the schools in the county and I've walked the grounds. We can do better. I'm not blaming anybody here. It's a big lot of responsibility. Just have to work closely together and, uh, find the ways to, to do that. But, uh, I'm just, that's, that's my thought process. We've got to align some priorities and we have to really shift priorities to what's gonna make us be able to compete with, because charter schools aren't bad. Okay? But kids are going to them for a reason. And we have to tap into why they're going in, going to those schools and we got to better what we're doing to be able to compete with them. And if we can't compete for them, create as close of level playing field as we can, understanding that DPI is not gonna create level playing fields and are, and are, and. understanding that DPI is not gonna create level playing fields, and they're, and they're, and they're not, and they're gonna keep, and the cap's gonna be gone. It's gone. If we understand those concepts, we can compete. We need to be able to compete so we can grow our, our local economies. Our local economy is very dependent upon our schools. If our schools do well, we do well as, as a county. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for, I know you, I wanna work with you, I know every, uh, Granville County Commissioner wants to work with you to make things better for our kids. And we, and, and I think we, we, I'm not saying this to be saying it because it's a cliche, it's gonna be very hard decisions that are, are gonna meet some disappointment, but ultimately, it will better it for what we started out that task force was, is keeping the kids first. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Um, Commissioner May, you said a whole lot that I agree with as far as the academics. Um, everything costs money, obviously, but actually, where I think we also need to laser focus, I'm not saying we don't need to do things to the high schools, but in our elementary schools, we need to laser focus, and I think we already are. I think there are a lot of good things that we're already doing, uh, to work with our K-three kids so that when they hit the, um, upper grades, they're not behind, they're on grade level, and everything we can do to put money toward that would be good, I think. Um, I don't know, uh, from what I'm hearing tonight, I think, um, most people feel that we are not gonna be able to afford the project in Holly at this point. Um, and looking at the numbers, it seems like consolidation is probably gonna be one of our smarter moves as far as efficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Gooch? Commissioner Gooch?
Look, I, I come across as gruff sometimes and all about the numbers, but that's the reality. And, you know, it's a harsh reality. And, uh, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but, you know, our budget is limited, and we have many needs throughout the county. If we had an unlimited budget, every commissioner, including me, would be a hundred percent on board, not only with redoing Holly's school, but we're putting together a program to keep all the other schools up on maintenance and keeping them up to, uh, uh, the level of the, uh, new Holly school would be if it were built. So it's, it's not that we're not compassionate, it's not that I'm trying to be harsh, I'm just unfortunately the bearer of bad news. Sorry, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cozart?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, uh, I'm so proud when I go out and talk to people about the commitment historically that the Board of Commissioners have made to education in Granville County. And, uh, as I listen to the comments tonight, and as I've been in meetings, uh, with our board, and looking at the financial projections and so forth, and the commitments that we have, uh, things such as Health Department and other issues that are going on, you know, I see where we are. But I also have an awful lot of confidence in the Board of Education of being able to look at options, options going forward. I'm confident that we'll be able to work through those together like we have in the past. I, for one, I'm not so surprised about what we saw at Holly. And I'll give you a little quick, um, trip back in the memory lane. When Tar River was built, there was a regulation gym built there. And part of the conversation that was shared with us at that time was that if we ever needed a middle school, we could build that school on that campus and would not have the cost of a gym. Well, I just believe subconsciously since that time, there have been a lot of question marks about the longevity of Holly as it is now. I'm not gonna say in a one intentional, they didn't do anything, but I just think it was a reality that when we purchased, uh, that school, that, built that school, there were some thoughts in the minds of the current, of the administration at that time, that if we did a middle school, it would be built on the campus of Tar River. So, while we are in a season as a board where we're not in a land of milking, milking honey, I do applaud the efforts that we've made, really to just address a lot of things. You know, no one hoped for the, the, um, mold issues that we dealt with, but the board unanimously came together to make sure that our kids were safe. And in this issue, I don't know where we'll land, but based on my individual conversations with the Board of Commissioners, we're gonna do the best we can. And I think the reason why I'm proud of the forty percent is because I don't think we can give too much for our students. And, and you're right, Mrs. Anderson, these are our kids, and I'm a lifelong, lifelong resident here, I don't plan to go anywhere. And when I go to Walmart, when I see a product of Granville County schools. And so, uh, let us just keep a spirit of working together. I don't know where all this will end, but I have confidence in this school board, that they will come back with something that will meet the needs of the students, and we will continue to work together. And I just wanna pledge my continued support to work with you. I wish I did have the answer tonight, and, uh, probably on this one, Mr. Peace, I'm glad I'm not a school board member, because, uh, we, we'll look to the school board for leadership on where we go. But I just wanna say to you, uh, as I have in the past, I'm gonna always be behind our kids, always gonna try, try to support education as best I can, whatever that looks like at the end of the day. So thank you for this opportunity for us to engage, uh, today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I just want to say, you know, I am really passionate about our future leaders, because we're gonna, let's give us another fifteen, twenty years, and we're gonna be looking to them to say, why did you, you know, if you're still here, you know, and, and we have to lay a foundation for them to go from. And I guess that's what this board is here to do, along with you all supporting us, our commissioners. And laying that foundation is really, it's probably gonna be tough. And I've heard two speakers now, and a commissioner here, and you, Ms. LeBrecht, when we visited three of those high schools last week and saw the curriculum, you know, that they had for those children, the CTE and all of those things, that is something to be proud of. I can, I would dare to say what's going on in the charter school have much on us as far as what I saw in those schools and those young adults learning a career. You know, they, they were in fact, you know, masonry, agriculture, everything, they had those rooms in those high schools, uh, last week, and these kids can come out and be ready if they don't want to go to college. And that's the thing, we're telling folks now, you don't, it's great, we want you to go to college, and I think that's what the charter school is, is really pushing, and we, we push it too. But you have a choice. And we should be out there putting that out there, that, you know, we have things in the public schools that will help our young adults to move into the next, you know, to the work world once they graduate. And we do. And I don't think it's being put out there enough that we should have a paper article once a week saying how great this school is and what it's doing for the young adults that's moving on through to high school toward a career. They can go to college already with, you know, credits based on what they have learned and everything like that. So, we do, we owe it to our young folks to lay that foundation. And I think we can start pulling back our students from the charter school when they look and say, hey, look at what's in the, look at what they're doing. You know, I can, that's something that we don't have here. This is something that, you know, the public school is doing. They're doing, you know, we can put it out there, and I think we should, because we do, those high schools were really impressive that we, when we went around last week, very much so.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any last closing thoughts? Commissioner Himmick?
I just want you all to know that, you know, the schools are the most important to me too, but what, this is not the only department we have to say no to. We've said no to the fire department. We've said no to the police department. Does that make you safe if I say no to them? I say no to DSS. That doesn't help our babies either. This is an amount of money we have, and I've gotta say no somewhere and not overspend or raise our taxes. And last I heard, we are up to the sixth highest county on taxes, is that right? Oh, we're number nine on, in this, out of a hundred counties. Our taxes are the ninth highest in this state. So we can only raise our taxes so much higher to do anything for anybody. So we're not kicking you to the curb because there are other people too that we also have to support. And, you know, it's scary if I tell the police department no. I mean, and, and cut them back and, and, or the fire departments, and, you know, cut out an engine here or, you know, machine, then they, they don't save that house with those children that just burned down. You know, so this is not an easy decision any of us are making at all. And, but I again, feel that we have got to work and find, I mean, we're working with all the other departments in the county to try to find each and every dime we can find to help the citizens of Granville County, and to make this county look the best in North Carolina, to get more people into this county, to bring those taxes up so we can give more to the schools, so we can give more to the police department and the fire department or DSS, or whoever needs it, to the hospital. I mean, if we keep saying no to the hospital, I don't know how much longer they're gonna stick, you know, up, and we just have to go to another state, another county to go to the hospital. It's not what I want. I want us to be able to stay in this county for what we need, including our babies. Our babies need to be here. So we're not trying to be, say no to be mean. We're saying no on a few things because we can't give you any more than what we've given.
Mr. Richardson, what comment?
Dr. O'Leary?
As I've listened to you all, first of all, this is the first time that I can remember in the years I have been on the board that we have met formally, uh, that I can remember. We've met, you know, in, informally here, there, and everywhere, but what I wanna say to you is, I think it's terrific. I don't like some of what you said, we don't maybe like some of what you said, but you made it clear, and we need to hear what you think is clear. And so, uh, and I think some of our board members said some things tonight that I was surprised at. So, I just think it's, it's very unique in this state that we would all come together and you tell us what you think. And you can't do this, or we don't have the money for whatever, whatever. Um, I just wanna say that I think it's great, I hope we can do this, uh, more often. I think there, we're not as suspicious of you as we maybe were, or you're not as suspicious of us, you get my point. So, thank you, thank you from my perspective that we were able to come together. It was, it was, other than what you said, it was, it was a pretty good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. O'Leary. Ms. Commissioner Gooch?
I have one final question.
Okay.
And I know it's naive, and feel free to laugh at me if you want to. Where's the North Carolina Education Lottery money? It doesn't seem to make it across the line from Wake County into Granville.
Would you like to answer that, Dr. Smith?
You ain't touching that.
Yeah.
I think you use it for debt.
Yeah, debt consolidation on a school, yeah. Commissioner Himmick?
I have one last thing. I need your help, each and every one of you, um, before we look at possibly adjourning. But I didn't know whether you all know that today is our special, honest, absolutely wonderful young lady's birthday. So could we sing happy birthday to Deborah Weary, please?
Oh, Deborah!
I got the mic right up, right up in here too.
So even though she's saying no, let's do this. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Deborah. Happy birthday to you. And thanks for spending your birthday with us.
So I have made a promise to Ms. Weary that we will be out of here by six-thirty. So with that, make some closing comments that I just appreciate the commissioners for coming and visiting with us and meeting with us. We greatly appreciate this being the first joint session, uh, in recent memory so that we could sit down across the table, discuss some very hard decisions and, and things that are in front of us. Uh, it does sound as each board's gonna have to go back and grapple with some very hard topics and make some very hard decisions, and then report that out to our community. And so we appreciate you coming and spending your evening with us for that. Uh, Board of Education members, I appreciate you for the work you've put in, uh, for the last couple of years as we have moved forward in consolidation and being, uh, as wise as we could for our stewardship of our, what's given to us for our school system. Appreciate the staffs that make all of our jobs, uh, look well, and so definitely appreciate what they do for that. Uh, so if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, um, from our Board of All right, we have a motion by Mr. Peace to have a second.
A second?
Have a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any further discussion from the, um, Board of Education? All right, for all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? And Chairman Himmick, I'll turn it over to you for your adjournment.
And I'd like to call for a motion for adjournment. Would somebody like to?
Moving to adjourn, oh.
I think I've got five hands jumping at the second on that. So we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Smith, or Chairman Smith, and by Chairman, and the second by Chairman, um, Jay. Um, all, any other discussion on that? You don't wanna stay and talk for a couple more hours? You sure? All right, um, all those in favor, vote with, with the voting sign of aye?
Aye.
All those that are not in favor? We are adjourned on our side. Thank you.
Thank you.